Good evening. Do I have a motion to start the June 2, 2021, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Hello, my name is Michelle.
Here.
I'm Jessica.
Here.
I'm Jessica. 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 I'm Jessica.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a student matter and an administrative matter to discuss there.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the June 2, 2021, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
My name is Michelle.
Here.
I'm Jessica.
Here.
I'm Jessica. 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 I'm Jessica.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the May 19, 2021, meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much. At this time, if any member of the public would like to participate in our meeting, you may approach the podium. Seeing none. Thank you. That moves me on to the President's update. We are going to be having a presentation during the superintendent's report with respect to funds that we have received from the federal government and our plans for using them, so we will speak in detail about that. I want to remind the community that thanks particularly to Doc-- oh, you moved seats-- to Dr. Ladwick. We have the Westchester County Department of Health will be here on site at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School tomorrow, providing vaccinations. We've sent out a number of emails to the community. That's open to students over the age of 12, as well as members of our faculty and staff who may wish to be vaccinated here. If you are interested, please see the materials on the district website or in emails that you received. And we really encourage anyone who would like to participate to do so and to get vaccinated as we work towards bringing our community, our educational community, back together in the most meaningful way possible. So, thank you very much to Dr. Ladwick for organizing that. He's got quite a relationship with the Westchester County Department of Health, so--
I think he's on the West--
[laughing] So, thank you for that. We have, again, this year, and I am sad to say, for the final time, I will be congratulating Bob Salerno, as well as Mrs. Meduno and the Business Office, that they received, again, a certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International. It reflects the incredible work that is done in the Business Office. I have had the pleasure of announcing to the community all of the times that I have sat in this chair that Bob and his office have received that. So, thank you, Bob, for your leadership. We truly would not be where we are. And I know we will have more opportunities to thank you for your service, but this is a recognition worth sharing with the community. I think this is--
I think that's an even dozen--
A dozen?
A dozen in a row?
I think it might--
It's more than we can count at this point.
Well, every time we apply for it, we get it. For those who are watching at home, it's the highest award you can receive in public financial accounting. So, it's not a little deal. It's a big deal. And I know Bob would echo what you said. He never takes enough credit, but Michelle DeCarlo is another great example, our district clerk, who's a part of that extraordinary department. The person following Bob is getting a stellar business department.
Absolutely.
Great work. Congratulations again.
I also want to-- we've talked many times at meetings about all of the ways that particularly our faculty at the middle school and the high school have worked with our fine and performing arts students to give them as many opportunities to perform and to share their art with the community. Harrison High School dance students produced and performed Home, which is a modern-day version of The Wizard of Oz told through dance. The virtual recordings of the students were filmed and edited together. It features all of the members of our Harrison High School Dance Ensemble. Choreography was by Debbie Toteta and Jessa Van Herwinen. I hope I pronounced that properly. I apologize. And our IB Year Two senior dancers. The project took over six months to complete, so congratulations to them. There is a link on the district website, as well as on the Fine and Performing Arts YouTube channel, so we encourage everyone to watch that. In addition, starting to stream on Friday is our spring play, which is a student-directed play. It's called She Kills Monsters: Virtual Realms. The play is directed by Mia Altamuro, and it is streaming beginning at 7:00 on Friday through midnight on Sunday. Tickets are free, but you have to register in advance to watch the performance. So, again, that's available. The links are available on the district website. Let's see. We want to thank everyone who participated in and was part of Relay for Life, which was another successful event at the high school. We have a number of athletic accomplishments to share. The varsity baseball team participated in the Andrew Gergitano Memorial Game. They defeated Rye 3 to 1, and Luke Burden pitched five and two-thirds innings of four-hit baseball, which is pretty remarkable. So, and we also want to particularly congratulate Senior Parker Gibbons, who won the Gergitano Memorial Scholarship, which, as members of the community know, is exceptionally meaningful. The game is in memory of a student who we lost a few years ago. So, thank you to everyone who participated. That is truly a community effort. So, congratulations to all of them. We want to thank the-- congratulate the girls lacrosse team. They raised $350 for the Lead the Way Fund, which supports the ongoing financial needs of the Special Operations 75th Ranger Regiment and their families. In softball, we actually-- first, I want to congratulate Gabriela Triano, who broke the school record for strikeouts. And I believe she broke the school records for strikeouts. And, oh, by the way, she's a freshman.
She's a freshman.
She had 104. The girls' team also beat Rye 3 to 1 with a dominating performance by Gabriela. So, 104 strikeouts. That's pretty remarkable. And I actually have late-breaking news, which didn't even make it--
Oh, you would.
--to the-- where did I write it down? Which didn't even make it to the school Twitter feed, which was that just in the past, I think, hour, the girls' varsity softball team defeated Eastchester. And as a result, they will be sharing the league championship title--
All right.
--with Eastchester. We did get a note from one of the players that Harrison had a better record than Eastchester, but they're sharing the title. So, we won't attribute that comment. We won't let you know who we got that comment from, which of the players. But congratulations to the girls' softball team. The high school track and field team had another just terrific showing at the Suffolk Invitational. Tristan Onn placed first in the high jump, and the boys' 4x100 relay also took first place. Brendan Lucy, Katrina Torelli, the girls' 4x100 relay, and David Ueda all had third-place finishes. And Joey Cardassia and Peter Fisher yet again had just phenomenal performances. They both broke the previous 200-meter school record, which was set in 2011, and they both broke the record in the same race, which is pretty remarkable. And this week, Joey, who ran the New York State number-two finish of 21.94 seconds, edged out Peter Fisher, who's at number four with 22.11 seconds. So--
I know those are only numbers to some people, but let me give you a visual. That means that Peter ran half the track in 21 seconds. That's pretty darn fast. I mean, I was a track coach for 18 years. These two young men, I said to Mrs. Lucy Pryor, this is the greatest track team I have seen in Harrison High School history. To have two athletes of that elite level, unbelievable. And they just keep doing it.
They do. And finally, we also want to congratulate the boys' tennis team, which won the San Marco Team Invitational Tournament. Connor Grif was the tournament MVP, who went 2-1-0 at number-one singles. And David Grif and Donnie Pizzatello decisively won their matches as well. So, congratulations to all. And our final, and so exciting, I know there will be more people than I speaking about it, but we want to-- we are recognizing tonight Arwin Fernandez-O'Brien for her just outstanding accomplishment. She earned fourth place in the ISF competition sponsored by Regeneron. She is here with us tonight, together with Dr. O'Keefe and Allison Blunt and Randy Gannell, teachers at Harrison High School and our Director of Science and Technology. And we are so glad that Arwin's here tonight to be recognized. And I'm hopeful that we're going to hear a little something from someone, not to put you on the spot, about what earned you this really remarkable accomplishment. First, congratulations.
Yeah, bravo.
And we would be thrilled if you would wanted to approach the microphone and just tell us a little bit about-- it's right back there-- a little bit about your research.
And I know you said you won't make us feel too inadequate.
Okay, so, my research was on pharmacogenomics, which is the study of individualized medicine. And this explores the relationships between pharmaceuticals and genetics in order to eliminate the amount of annual adverse drug reactions. Annual adverse drug reactions are when an individual takes medication and experiences some sort of unwanted side effect. And so, this presents the goal of pharmacogenomics, which is to eliminate the amount of annual adverse drug reactions that happen. So, my research was using fruit flies to see how varying genotypes in these fruit flies would affect the way they respond to the same dosage of a medication. And so, I did all experimentation from home as COVID-19 caused labs to close, which meant that I had to take care of these fruit flies from my house. I performed a genetic cross between the different mutant fruit flies from my living room, and I found that the varying genotypes did affect the way the flies responded to the same dosage of a medication, which reinforces the main principle of pharmacogenomics.
Wow.
Unbelievable.
That's-- Thank you so much. And maybe in private, we'll find out how the fruit fly experience worked for the whole family.
[laughing]
Because I'm really curious about that. In my house, people freak out if there's a fly on a, you know, banana that's going bad. I can't even imagine what it must have been like in the living room. Well, congratulations. And again, thank you so much, Dr. O'Keefe, Mr. Gannell, and Ms. Blunt for the incredible work you do supporting everyone. And Ms. Bukema is here as well, our high school principal, in support. So, thank you. What is done up at our high school is just remarkable. And thank you all, particularly in a year like we've just had, to have such an accomplishment.
And this is the furthest any student has ever gone in Harrison High School history. So, you have really blazed a trail for us. We are so proud of what you did, as Mrs. Mang said, under ridiculously difficult circumstances. But Randy and Allison, the way you two have continued to inspire kids throughout this period, it really is a credit to you as well. We, of course, respect what she's been able to do, but none of this happens without great teachers. So, we are heartfelt thanks to both of you. Dr. O'Keefe back there, like the proud mom.
Super.
And Ms. Bukema is weeping behind her glasses when she's always weeping.
Yes.
Please, go to the mic, though, so we can hear you.
Oh, please, can you go to the mic? Yeah, that's worth posterity.
Just to, for those of you guys that don't know what ISF stands for, it's the International Science and Engineering Fair. It's what most would consider the Olympics of science fairs and the highest level of achievement that a student can achieve. So, you know, congratulations to Arwin, because that's--
Absolutely.
--is literally winning the Olympics of a science fair. And like you mentioned, the highest we've ever achieved at Harrison, so congratulations to you.
Great. Thank you.
And I expect a picture on our website tomorrow from somebody.
From someone. Unmasked. We'll figure out a way to get that. Super. I typically, at this point, I go through our upcoming events and dates. I am going to not do that in an effort for all of us to get out of here before tomorrow, because there are two full pages of events and activities. So, the one thing that I will remind the community is that our next-- at our next Board of Education meeting, which will be June 16, we will be recognizing all of the members of our learning community who will be retiring at the end of this year. So, we have a number of them, and that is always a really special evening. So, as always, members of the public are welcome and invited, and we'll have the opportunity to, in public, share some of their thoughts if they would like to. So, I would encourage everyone to go to the website, make sure you're checking the calendar. We have been updating things as they've come and as they've changed, as we've shared before, and I know Dr. Wool will share in his update. We have pushed out and changed dates and things on certain events, and graduations have been-- dates have been finalized as we've been getting more guidance from the state. But I encourage everyone to go to the website and make sure that you have the proper dates in your calendar. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Wool.
Well, thank you. First of all, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is our first-ever prom on the campus of Harrison High School. Want to thank Mr. Salerno, Mr. Gannell, certainly Ms. Bukema for their hard work in making this happen. It was no easy feat, but I'm told we have over 210 students have already signed up.
Sorry, I'm on the--
It's going up.
I'm on the--
That's fantastic. Rain or shine, there will be a prom at Harrison High School tomorrow. And in deference to the long hours that you all work, I would not be at all offended if you decided to go home, as I start to talk about all the things that I want to talk about. If you want to stay, I'm happy to have you stay, but I am going to do a presentation. But congratulations and thank you for coming. We're so proud of you, all of you. Okay, so, I have a lot to share tonight. I'll try to be concise, but there is an awful lot going on. And because I am fully vaccinated and more than 12 feet away from everybody, I'm taking off my mask. Okay, a couple things. Before we get into the presentation, if you think you're having a stroke, you're not. It's just that the light is flashing on and off. We continue to have some really exciting news with our summer programs. As of today, we have over 1,400 students registered for the K-12 programs. Want to commend my Assistant Superintendent for curriculum and instruction. He's done a masterful job of working with teachers and colleague administrators to put together a remarkable program. As we present later, we will talk about how some of those programs are going to be funded by this federal money. I also want to thank my colleague, Dr. Ladwick, who's had the difficult task of helping to fill the vacancies necessary to have teachers in seats to fill these over 80 student programs. Mr. Salerno has also been a part of what we do. He's been working with Michael to try to identify spaces in all the buildings, because we will have programs running in all six buildings throughout the summer. In the meantime, we're also installing new windows in the Preston Elementary School this summer, so all of those things have to be coordinated. So, I just want to touch base on that. We also want to mention, you talked about graduation. So much of what we have had to deal with this year has been indecisive, imprecise guidance from people who define what we can and cannot do. Dr. Ladwick has been my invaluable partner in trying to stay abreast of the ever-changing events. Now, Ms. Bukema, Mrs. Himes, Mr. Freed-- Mrs. Himes has the largest elementary school. We spent an inordinate amount of time just trying to figure out what we would be permitted to do indoors and out. And the rules keep changing. They're changing as recently as this past Thursday. One of our gravest concerns was we have a high school graduating class of almost 300 students, 288 kids. We didn't know whether or not the kids counted in the total. Initially, they did. Now, it appears they don't. But the better news, if we can ever get it verified, which will be a relief to us, is it is possible we will not have to test the graduates on the day of graduation. But that's still-- am I correct, Brian? It's still not fully verified?
That's correct.
That's correct. So, as you can see, those of you watching at home, I have a request, because I'm very attuned to what's going on in and around our community, how our kids are feeling, what we're being asked to accomplish. And right now, we are focused on a very complicated prom, a very complicated high school graduation, a moving-up ceremony, and four elementary school graduations. I have seen some requests for additional activities that will be school-based. And I can assure you that we are working to put together a comprehensive list of all of the things that we are going to try to provide for all of the children in all of the schools before the end of the school year. But here's what I want you to understand, and I want to be clear about this. When someone says to a principal, "Just do this for a particular grade level," what you don't understand is the back end of the planning that's required to do that. So, kindergarten graduation has come up, been raised by some parents. The principals are planning activities, not only for the kindergarten that will be in-person, but also for all of the grade levels. But here's what I want you to think about. So, the principals are running, in the case of Mrs. Himes, an elementary school of almost 600 kids. And when we ask her to do one more thing, it's not as if I can snap my fingers and bring it together. In order for her to bring a grade level together, to have parents, everybody needs to sign in. Everybody needs to demonstrate where they're sitting. In the event somebody gets sick, she's required to contact trace. So, I'm going to say this, as I've said time and time again throughout this pandemic. Provide grace for your teachers. Provide grace and kindness for the principals leading your six buildings. I can assure you, the only thing they think about, the only thing they think about, is the safety and social and emotional well-being of your students. If you have a request, speak to them directly. Understand the implications of your request. There is no person on my team who hasn't given every single part of themselves to make this work for your kids. And I thank the PT Council today, because the one thing that was so helpful to us throughout this period of time was our parents doing the simplest things, like saying thank you to teachers, like saying thank you to their custodians, like saying thank you to their principals, who are all tired and are all trying their very best. So, we're all a little tattered. We're all a little tired. But I want you to remember what happened last year. I got an enormous amount of criticism towards the end of the year, because I was the last superintendent to announce plans for graduation. We had an in-person graduation last year, because we ran the table by waiting for the rules to resolve, rather than doing something that would have been easy, easier on all of us, but in some way diminished the opportunity for your kids. The same thing is happening right now. We're watching these rules every single day, because we're committed to making sure whatever we do for your kids is the very best that we possibly can. So, instead of assuming that we're not paying attention, assume that we are. You will be hearing more probably by tomorrow. Our principals are putting a comprehensive memo together about all the things that we're doing to honor your children. But I want everybody here to remember what I'm asking you to think about. Teachers are tired. They're way past tired. Principals are tired. They're way past tired. We need your help now. Your help is thinking with us, helping us to get to the finish line so that your kids are whole. The other thing I want to remind you of is, you talked about our Fine and Performing Arts. I got this wonderful email from a student. We're about to do our one-act plays in a week. Those are original pieces. Mr. Gannell's aware of this. The student wrote to me, and he said, "Dr. Wool, we're doing a piece called Verbatim." Verbatim is, we're going to take something that was written by somebody, and we're going to use that verbatim. That's what's scrapped. He said, "It's very exciting." He said, "Can I use the letter that you wrote to the community when you reopened school?" And I said, "Sure." "Why is that?" And he reminded me of something we should all think about. He said, "You have reminded us over and over again that the children are always watching." And he said to me, "I want you to know I'm watching." I think, right now, it's a time for all of us to watch ourselves. Our kids watch us. If we're joyful and we help them navigate this difficult time, they'll find their way. We are paying attention. We're going to have a fantastic in-person graduation. We're going to have a fantastic prom. We're going to have wonderful year-end events, which we've been promising you all along, that will bring the schools back together and create community that was fractured as a result of the pandemic. Don't be impatient. Don't be disrespectful. Don't be hurtful. These people are working as hard as they can for your kids. I'm asking for your help and your generosity of spirit. That's what I need from you, for the people that care for your kids every day. Couple of other quick things. Michael, give us an update on the numbers, just a little bit about PD and the summer programs, if you would. Probably go to the mic, otherwise Andy won't hear you.
So, as you talked about before, we'll start with the student programs. We're running-- we have 475 unique individual enrollments in one or more courses at the elementary level. More than-- about 200 students are enrolled for the 1-6 Bridges Program, which serves students who have been identified with particular criteria of instructional learning loss. And that program is in both math and language arts. We also are running more than 39 enrichment workshops. We also are running more than 39 enrichment workshops with over 700 registrants, and that's an absolutely new program. So we've basically doubled the number of elementary students participating in the academic part of the program. And we've initiated, this is a totally new program. And I do want to thank Ms. O'Keefe, Dr. O'Keefe, who was working very closely with me to put secondary programs in place, and Mr. McCourtney and Ms. Goldman, who Goldman is everywhere, doing everything, and they've been instrumental in getting the elementary programs in place. Couldn't have done this without them. At the secondary level, we have more than 380 unique students participating, and we expect at least 50 to 75 more as enrollment continues in a combination of academic extension, which is our targeted learning loss enrichment programs. We have between enrichment and secondary preparation programs, including our college SA, which is traditionally run with about 90 students, we have more than 500 registrants. So all told, as you said, we're in the neighborhood of basically serving more than 1,000 unique students and more than 1,500 students in multiple courses, and this is an incredible accomplishment. For the in-service, we're registering, we have about 39 to 40 courses run by a combination of consultants, leaders of our administrators, and teachers running courses. And we have now about 550 to 600 registrants. So teachers are going to be very busy this summer. They're extending themselves incredibly to do both the enrichment, the academic intervention programs, and continue to participate in the service.
And while you're there, there's two things I want to remind folks of. So we do an incredible job of professional development with our teachers, but they also use our summer programs as learning labs. So your kids will be experiencing our outstanding faculty in their classrooms, trying out new and innovative either assessments, curriculum, pedagogy. So we love the synergy that this creates. And last year, as you recall, folks, we used this learning laboratory to figure out what asynchronous learning was going to look like. We were one of the only districts that did not allow kids to Zoom every day because the research we did in the summer indicated it was actually counterproductive for kids and ultimately became a disengagement tool instead of an engagement tool. So we're excited about what we're going to learn, and it leads nicely into this presentation. But before we jump into the presentation, I want to give one reminder to parents. Dr. Cantor presented today this wonderful program. As a former English teacher, Michael and I and Brian are all former English teachers. Only Bob's not a former English teacher. We love the idea that kids can be recognized for their passion about reading. So Jamie Cantor has created this Reading Ambassadors Program. It will not be limited. So if your kids are going to camp, it's the only virtual program. They can participate, they can sign up, they can participate all summer. There's no limit on it. And when they come back to school, they will be recognized by their either grade-level teacher or their English teacher as a reading ambassador. And they'll work with kids to encourage them to work with books, talk about books, engage in book talks. I think it's a great idea, and I love the way it honors a group of kids that typically don't get recognized. I was a voracious reader. Nobody ever gave me a medal for that or recognized me for that.
So Dr. Wool, you'll get a medal this year for participating in the Reading Ambassador Program.
I don't think there's any medal that's going to help me.
And I will personally award it to you.
I'm going to get in that balloon and go back to Oz, is what I'm going to do.
But it's a great program.
So it's a great program. It's still available. Sign up.
It's a great transformation from the pandemic. We've tried for years to come up with a way, and this, we think, is the most sustainable.
And on that note, we're going to now share with you some of the hard work that the team has been engaged in, but particularly Michael and Bob. The board is well aware that we've received two grants, what I'm calling CRESSA, because I don't like to say the whole word, and ARP, these two federal grants. We'll talk about them as soon as Michael fires it up. What I want you to understand, though, is the complete lunacy of what we are asked to do. So we got this money in late May.
Well, we were told about the money.
Yeah, we heard rumor of the money, and people started reading about it in the newspaper. And then we tried to figure out if the amounts we were reading were accurate. They weren't, and they're still changing. We were trying to find the guidelines under which they could be spent. They're not really out yet, but they're kind of out. But we have to present a plan to the public and seek your feedback prior to June 15th. So having said that, is the agenda up behind me? Okay, so here's what the CRESSA is, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplement Appropriations Relief Act, and the American Rescue Plan. And as we go through this, you'll see that each of these has some limitations, some specific purposes. Tonight, we're going to talk to you about our priorities, and they're pretty straightforward. And we've had to lay out, and I asked Bob and Michael to work on a four-year funding plan. As the board knows, I gave some specific criteria for what I wanted our summer program to look like, both now and going forward, and some implications for how we might improve the physical plant to improve health and safety going forward. We'll talk about the timeline tonight. We'll pause and see if there are any questions from the public or suggestions, and then we will, obviously, the board can participate and ask questions at any time. Next slide, please, Michael. So Michael did a good job of poring through tons of convoluted guidance, and then Bob was working from the other side, Michael looking more for guidance around instruction, and Bob more about what are the other possibilities for these criteria. But essentially, this money is focused on three things. COVID-19 prevention mitigation. What does that mean? It's a good question. One example of what it could have meant was had we not opened school and we were looking for air filtration, that would have been an example of a prevention slash mitigation. So one of our pieces of work is uncovering and determining how we can improve the physical plant and prevention and mitigation in the event of a future experience similar to COVID. So hopefully, we won't be in the circumstance of having to shut the doors. Michael has been working tirelessly on figuring out how to compensate for lost instructional time. I don't know that that's an accurate term, but it's the best one we could come up with because we're not sure it's learning loss so much as it is lost instructional time. Also, there's a component in the grant that allows you to support kids throughout the year, not just in the summer, if you need to. But the grant is always focused, as it should be, on those children disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So those in our community with the greatest need. And I like to remind our community, we are so blessed to be here, but one in five children in our high school lives at or below the poverty level. You know, we are a district predicated on the idea that all means all, and so finances never prevent children in this community from participation because of the vision and the commitment of our Board of Education. But their home lives, we can't fix, and this grant is meant to prioritize their needs first and foremost, and we certainly will and continue to do that. The next is an allocation, and I'm going to let Michael and/or Bob talk about how this breaks down, CRESSA, ARP, and just talk about what it means in general terms. Somebody better go to the mic, though.
Oh, I'm talking to that.
Bob's like, "Why'd you have to send budget back?"
Bob's going, "I didn't know I was..."
Hi, thank you. We're very excited about the opportunity to have this additional funding. Just to talk briefly about it again, we spoke about it at the budget meetings at length. These funds are to supplement, not to plan, meaning, you know, many governments, or many people, or many folks, or people talk about, "Can you bring my taxes down?" That's not why these funds are coming to us. It's to help in the aftermath of the coronavirus. So one of the things that the ARP, which is the larger grant, distinct, the distinct difference between that and the CRESSA grant is that there's a set aside for learning loss. Minimally, we have to set aside 20% of that grant, and we could do more if we so choose. And Mr. Greenfield can speak to that. He has a little chart there that shares that we have 20% earmarked, or 607,000 for learning loss, and then additional $303,000 for supplement, summer programs. Through both of these grants, there's been a heavy emphasis by the government to improve air quality in schools. You know, recognizing that many schools across our nation have been built decades and decades and decades ago where air conditioning really was a luxury. Now, they're looked at, it's looked at mostly as a necessity. I think if you were to put up a new building, I think you would have to have air conditioning in that building. It's not necessarily for comfort, but it's for exchange of air quality, outside air coming into the building. So we have engaged with our attorneys, and we pretty much have them on standby, to give us, we gave them priorities throughout several of our buildings where we think the highest priorities to concentrate on, to get air conditioning and air exchange into these buildings to improve the number of locations we have where we could use as additional space even in the summer, and to help during the year should we have a re-emergence of the virus again in the future. Let's hope, I hate even saying it. One of the other things we're looking at is technology for ionization systems in our large air conditioning systems we have right now. So rather than just exchanging the air, which we have right now, we want to put this in there that would kind of, it kills the virus when it goes through the machines. We got the virus, we got the quotes on that. I'm having my architects, just their engineers, vet this technology before we make an investment in it. We have inserted, we have installed them in our split units that don't bring in outside air, in the instructional spaces and in offices, but we want to enhance our main systems, like this one right here, for instance. So the architects will get back to this some. We want to incorporate that into the June 15th application, so we'll be well underway. And if we were to do this, we would have a whole year to have the design work done, submitted to SED, and I guess we'd be able to install these next summer when schools are, you know, not sessioned or in a lower mode.
And Bob, the one point that you've made, and I want to just make it again for the public, because when you look at these numbers, you'd say, "Well, that's a lot of money on infrastructure." But what the board certainly understands is this is what we call cliff money. And you go right off a cliff, and you don't get the value out of this money unless you invest it wisely. So we would never build in permanent programs using this kind of money because unless we can sustain that program, it goes off the cliff. The value of these infrastructure improvements are, they have a minimum of a 10-year lifespan. So we know that we're going to be improving the quality of the educational environments for kids in all six buildings by expending this money wisely. That is not to say, Michael's done a really good job of balancing this equation because we have a very rich summer program that we always support. We are now building out that summer program, and as we come out of this, as we get into the timeline, we will be making decisions over the next several years of how much we want to build into our base budget and how much we can let go. So I think the plan, as we get further into it, you will see the synergy between the two. But this is definitely a long-term investment. As Bob said, it's really a once-in-a-lifetime chance for us to get some work done that we would otherwise not be able to do for the foreseeable future.
That's a great point, Dr. Wool. To be successful and make this work the best way for the district and the children, when you come off of this program at the end, you shouldn't feel like you got jolted, like something's missing.
Exactly right.
The way Michael's developing this thing, he's actually dovetailing the Title I grants and funding in the summer along with this funding. So when we come off of it, it's going to be a very gradual transition, unnoticed.
That's very helpful. And I would like to move to the next slide because I found it the most useful slide because this is a very long-term plan that needed to be developed in a very short timeframe. And I think Michael's laid out a good example of how the money can be expended and where. You want to go to the mic, Michael? Just walk us through this. Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Mrs. Kozak. Did Brody win?
She won.
All right, congratulations.
Very, very good.
We're in the middle of our presentation. Michael's going to take us through this timeline. So Michael, and Kelly, you'll also see here that certain things are permissible on some grants and not on others. So you want to just take us through that?
Yeah, I'll just make two, two points to build upon Mr. Salerno's part of the presentation. Two really concrete examples, how the summer programs and our approach to instructional programs dovetails with the infrastructure is that this summer, we're using every single space that's air-conditioned and then some to run the programs that we have planned for. So we're short. And the infrastructure makes it possible for us to continue building out the programs and doing it in a way that's healthy and safe for students, not to mention much more comfortable if we're looking at summer and extending, in effect, the school year.
You know, that's such a good point, too, Michael, because as we go through this, we often realize how things are connected. We've been struggling. Teachers are tired. Some don't want to work in the summer programs. Having safe spaces gives teachers confidence to do the work. And so it's equally important for the mental health of our teachers to feel like the spaces they're in are safe and healthy.
And harkening back to the money that was spent from the first relief bill, which funded quite a bit, if not all, of the air cleaning devices that have created a safe and healthy working condition. So it's all connected, and we've been very, and we're very fortunate because the federal money, as it was planned for, for 50 states that are in all school districts, all in different places. Many haven't reopened the way we have.
Right.
So we're in a position of actually being in, looking at what it looks like to be open, being able to work off actual conditions, plan for the summer, and then try, in the best of, you know, possible worlds, what does four years look like with two weeks planning time and guidance that's actually conflicting, convoluted, complicated, and frankly, not very helpful. So we've tried to simplify it. We're instructionally focusing in on, you know, 30% of the ARP funds, which allow us, actually require us to reserve 20% minimally, and we looked at 10% more with summer programs. So that's the 607 and the 303 across the ARP category. And back to your point, Dr. Wool, the other funding, the CRESSA, the Coronavirus Act, doesn't have the same requirements of holding back money, the 20%. Therefore, we felt that that's the place to put the whole infrastructure package in that. So our plan is to fund infrastructure fully from CRESSA and 80% infrastructure, I'm sorry, 70% infrastructure with a 30% set aside for the instructional.
And I thought you both did a really good job of being very strategic and getting the best bang for our buck in this plan. I ended up feeling really comfortable that this is in our best interest, but we can talk about it as we do.
And in terms of the four years mapped out, and Bob will remind us all that, in a single school year, you can't necessarily plan for the ventilation system being installed, but we are planning for the starting point. So over four years, we would be funding approximately $227,000 a year for learning loss in summer programs or instructional loss in summer programs from '21 through '24. And that supplements the Title I, which is approximately $170,000 that we spend on summer programs. And we're, we have a plan so that, as Bob indicated, by the time we get to the end of that cycle, it won't, we'll know more about what the programs are, what works, what doesn't work, and we'll have built a program that we believe is sustainable and focused, even though the funds will at a certain point, you know, run out and we'll hit that cliff. And far as ventilation, about $708,000 a year, if you looked at the three years from the ARP, and about $450,000 a year for the three-year cycle for the CRESSA. And that's what this slide represents. That's in our thinking. That's in a, you know, a strategic plan, and the details are still being sorted out and ready for the application.
And one of the questions that Mr. DiLorenzo posed to me when he saw this was about, how will we know what the program will look like going forward? Do you want to go back to that question?
Well, I want to frame it two ways. Certainly, we understand that the summer, particularly in the way that we are thinking about learning loss in terms of lost instructional time to ensure our students are progressing and hitting, you know, the benchmarks... and hitting, you know, the benchmarks and rubrics for our standards-based program. But as we go into the '21-'22 school year, there are going to be assessments happening even after our summer program. We may see an increase in intervention needs. How have we, I understand that we are under the gun here to respond to the federal government's unreasonable timeline, but how are we considering that there may be some augmented need during the school year in the instructional program, particularly, you know, in the first two years? Because hopefully, our goal is, students are progressing with this added instructional time, and that gap is being closed.
That is a great question, and I think it's, it's actually sort of a revisitation of what we talked about this past year. We, we would be disingenuous if we said to you, "We know what the summer program is going to yield."
Right.
We don't. We have a sense of what our kids need, because Michael did a spectacular job of tracking student growth and progress. But what we don't know yet is how will kids recover or not recover, or where will they recover? And so our commitment is to reassess in September, and then reassess at least every 10 weeks throughout the coming year, because as you point out, we may find, and Michael's left some money on the table for this, that kids didn't get enough support, or the support that's in place during the course of the year isn't enough to lift those kids. And I think what he's planning to do is to differentiate a little bit, but you want to talk a little bit about what that might look like?
Yeah, I mean, we've set aside funds that, we're actually piloting several programs right now, and one in particular in math. It's a supplement, two-hour supplemental programs that is happening after school for a targeted group of students.
Right.
So we're, we're testing the field to see the effect that has, and we're using a newly developed extension of the NWA MAP, which allows teachers to build very targeted differentiated programs for individual students and use the MAP assessment as a basis. So we're piling that now during the school year.
That's great.
That's about a 10-week program, and we're using that as a basis for what a supplemental program might look like during the school year. But we want to remain nimble, flexible, and respond after we've measured what, what a three-week program, for example, for Bridges, we can't have unrealistic expectations of what a summer program for, let's say, elementary students will result in. We want to hold steady rather than necessarily achieve gains. If we get gains, that's great.
Yeah.
But holding learning loss back.
Right.
And getting students back in, and these are all onsite. Every one of our summer programs are in-person in schools. So we think that we're going to know quite a bit more coming out of the summer, and with that information, we're going to look at, the money will be available, and we can amend our grant and our plans as a result of actual data, an actual study of student progress.
Can I ask a second question about summer programs?
Sure.
You know, we invested quite a bit in enrichment programs this particular summer, not to just address the learning loss, but to address some of the social engagement and social, emotional development of our kids that they lost. You know, as we move back into full-time and that's integrated, are we thinking that enrichment may diminish over the four years? Or is that something that we're going to continue to be committed to?
That's a great question.
As we, as we consider a longer-term summer program approach?
So ideally, what we hope we will know at the end of this four-year cycle in 2024 is, which of the programs that we implement are really creating value that we didn't expect?
Got it.
So, for example, we were quite surprised at the numbers of kids who opted into enrichment and left learning loss behind, even though they're eligible for both.
Yeah.
Because as Randy can tell you, kids want to be engaged, they want to have fun.
Sure.
They want to be challenged. And so we may be happily surprised that the road through the woods is really not remediation, it's engagement.
Got it.
And we, what we hope then is, we're going to learn where that balance lives. This money gives us the luxury of making decisions each year to say, which, if any, parts of this program do we want to make more permanent? That's a financial decision. And which are not going to serve a life beyond 2024?
Understood. But what I'm hearing is, at least in the next four years, enrichment, which was not part of that equation prior to this year, we're making that four-year commitment.
Yeah, it was, as you know, a tiny part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, and I think it's going to look very different in the summer of '22.
Of course.
Than it looks now in a more developed. For example, what we learned is, students really want to take an engineering class.
Sure.
And we're not surprised, but we have the evidence now that that is really well subscribed.
Which might produce more science research regeneron.
That's something we call enrichment now, you know, in fact...
Just trying to draw the through line there.
As we saw this evening, it's, you know, it's, it's...
But I want to build on something...
Besides research is any indication, engineering is far more than really...
You hit on a critical point, though, because we don't know. But the same is true on the infrastructure side. So, you know, Bob and I know these buildings pretty well. We had a pretty good list of where we wanted to strike and make a difference in these schools. But what we don't know is, we're still researching, what's the most effective way to do it? That's why we brought in the architects and the engineers. And ultimately, what is the cost? The cost may become more prohibitive as more people do it, and the materials... So one of the things I think we're better at than many is, because we're so prepared, we're probably going to get into the bid process before most places, which will give us an advantage. But we won't know, on the infrastructure side, just like we won't know on the instructional side, what the "it" is until we get a little more clarity. But I think we have a really good plan for getting there. So last slide. Is it the last slide? Yeah, I think it is, right? This is a slide, I think we should call this Grant Insanity Development Timeline. So let's look at these dates. Released grant allocations, May 14th. Publication grant application, May 17th. Deadline for ARP assurances, May 24th. I just want to say this out loud, the district was asked to make assurances to a grant that had no guidelines.
And we did.
So we assured them, yep, there's definitely no guidelines, but anyway. The deadline for the CRESSA grant submission is June 15th, and the deadline for the ARP grant is to be determined. So this is our attempt to share with the board and the public our best thinking about how to maximize the opportunities that these dollars present for the health and safety of our kids, our faculty, and our long-term approach to summer programming and support throughout the year. And that is all we have for you tonight on that.
Super. Thank you very much for that. I want to just remind the community that this was one of many opportunities, and that we have, and are, one of the many ways that we're presenting this plan to the community. We shared it with the PT Council at their meeting this morning, and Dr. Wall and Mr. Laidwig engaged with PT Council on that. They've spoken with...
Actually, Michael, Brian, and I met this morning with PT Council, and Michael and I will be meeting with the student government this week. And it's also up on our website. And this, Madam President, is an opportunity, if anybody in the public wants to ask questions, they can.
Right. So at this time, we will open public participation again. If anyone would like to ask any questions, share any feedback, provide any comments, or if members of the board have any other additional questions or comments that they'd like to ask Dr. Wall. I think I would just like to ask, on behalf of the board, we talk often about the fact that this is a research-based organization. We take the time to reflect and look at what we've done, and I know we will all be interested to hear the process by which the determinations are being made as to what's working, to Dennis' point, you know, which, which of the programs that we're putting in place particularly this summer and through the year have been most effective, and what, if any, changes we think that need to be made, and what we'll be rolling out in the years to come. So we'll look forward to hearing about that.
We're excited, we're excited for the opportunity, and thank you for always being so attentive and supportive and involved. We appreciate the amount of time the board puts in. You guys got this on the weekend, and I'm sure that's what you wanted to do with your Labor Day weekend, so.
The final thing, I think, and we touched on this a little bit, is that one of the things we've talked about that we'll be doing over the summer are end-of-the-summer events as part of this to bring the students back, create community. Those are not finalized at this point.
They're not finalized, but they're getting close. We, the principals and I have been meeting. Each school will have unique traditions. Some will have field days, some will have kindergarten activities, they'll be different in every building. I asked the principals to withhold sending them out, because we don't have final guidance yet on what the rules are, kind of like the grant. But we are now seeing that people are asking a lot of questions, so we're going to send out a more generalized overview, so that everybody knows that our principals and our teachers are committed to having year-end celebrations in all schools for all kids in some way.
I was actually asked, I, sorry, I wasn't clear, that we are doing, we'll be doing things at the end of the summer.
Yes.
To rebuild community as we come back into school.
Absolutely. And this, these activities will now be connected.
Yep.
This, for example, will be very hard to bring kindergartners back at the end of the summer, so we may have a culminating experience for them now. We're looking at, Mr. Fried is looking at, how can we do moving up for fifth grade in a way that's different, because the kids missed Husky Day?
Right.
So all of those things are in planning stages, and we're hoping that Dr. Laidwig will work his magic and get an answer tonight from the Department of Health as to what the heck the rules are.
Tonight. No pressure.
No pressure.
All right. With that, thank you to all of you for putting that together on a, we'll call it a quick timeframe.
Yeah, they did a great job. They really did.
Super. With that, we will move on to the personnel agenda. Michelle, I would just, if you would note that Ms. Kozak came at nine, arrived at nine, if you can reflect that in the minutes. With that, we will move on to the personnel agenda. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objections. Item one, certificated personnel. A, resignation. B, regular appointment, SED clearance received. C, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Roman numeral two, non-certificated personnel. A, resignation. B, resignation for the purpose of retirement. C, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Roman numeral three, other. A, contracted services provider. B, corrective resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the administrative report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, Board of Education reorganization meeting. Item two, approval of ice hockey merger. Item three, authorization of agreement between Harrison Central School District and Westchester County. Item four, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item five, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Item six, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the finance report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, 2020-21 appropriation transfers. Item two, amendment to the 2020-2021 general fund budget for use of the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. Item three, approval of corrective resolution. Item four, 2021-22 AS7 contract for Board of Cooperative Educational Services, BOSIs. Item five, approval of Harrison, of the Harrison High School Photography Agreement revised and replaced. Item six, contract award RFB number 2122-05 landscaping supplies. Item seven, contract award RFB 2020, oh, sorry, 2122-06 lumber and building supplies. Item eight, contract award RFB number 2122-07 masonry supplies. Item nine, contract award RFB 2122-08 projector bulbs. Item 10, services agreement between the Omni Financial Group, Inc. and the Harrison Central School District. Item 11, contract award RFP number 2022-1 professional auditing firms. Item 12, approval of contract with Michael Andrews Audio-Visual Services, Inc., M-A-A-V-S. Item 13, agreement with Images Photography for Photography Services for the LMK Middle School. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have an administrative matter we need to discuss.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That, just as a reminder, the next meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education will be June 16th, 2021. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the June 2nd, 2021 business meeting?
Motion.
Thank you very much. The next, oh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much. That concludes the June 2nd, 2021 regular business meeting. The next regular business meeting will be June 16th, 2021. Just a reminder that we will be recognizing our retiring faculty, staff, and administrators. We will also be officially granting tenure to members of our community, so that will be a very...
Exciting meeting.
Exciting meeting. Oh, yes. Would you do a roll call, Michelle?
Thanks, Michelle.
I don't want to call my own.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. And we all know where the fire exits are. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much.